The fifteenth. If you would, let's please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
It's to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the invocation. To God only Father, we thank you for this day. We ask that you be with us as we make decisions for our town and our citizens. Lead us, guide us, and direct us. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
The first item on, is my mic? Is my mic loud enough? Emily, is my mic loud enough? It is, it's like, okay. Okay, the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Does anything need to come off or anything need to be added?
Make a motion we approve.
Second. Councilman McGowan made the motion, Councilman Dobbin seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item is the regular council meeting minutes of March the eighteenth. Are there any additions, corrections, or comments on these?
Make a motion we approve as written.
Mayor Pro Tem Trippit made the motion, Councilman McGowan seconded, all in favor. Any opposed? The next item is our work session of March the twenty-fifth. Any additions, corrections, or comments on these minutes?
I make a motion that it be approved as written.
A second.
Councilman Dobbin made the motion, Councilman Brown seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? At this time, I call our first public hearing on the ordinance to amend zoning for Strickland Road, Archer one seven J zero seven zero two two eight. Anyone wishing to make a comment to the council, please come forward at this time.
Good afternoon. Our first hearing tonight is for the property on Strickland Road across from Old English Court. You have your packet in front of you with all of the details on that. And we have Mr. Rob Bailey here to answer questions and to hopefully help everyone understand. He does have a brief presentation.
Okay.
Good evening. Thanks for this opportunity to present this project to you this evening. My name is Rob Bailey, R and R Development Group. We're located on Jones Franklin Road in Raleigh, North Carolina. I always think it's important for you guys to kind of know who you're dealing with. And we're a local developer here in Raleigh. My, both my parents were raised in Selma. And grandparents spent a lot of time in Johnston County, second home to me. And we've actually done several projects here. We locally in Smithfield did a neighborhood, the center construction right now called Franklin. It's on the corner of Willsus Mills and Durwood Stevenson Parkway. It's a townhome project downtown. Smithfield on the corner of Bridge, right behind the Little Brown Jug. It's a neighborhood called River Walk, it was five houses, we built those. We're also doing a neighborhood called Cattail, which on ninety-six, Cattail Lake. We just broke ground on that. That was actually some property that my grandfather acquired a long time ago. And so we're developing that currently. So we're a local group, we're privately owned. And you know, felt like that's, we're also, we're developing in Smithfield, Selma, Clayton, Wendell, Buquay. We're down in Lowington and Sanford and Harnett County, we have a pretty big presence down in that area. So that's just a little bit about who we are. So this project on the, call it the RA Lee property right now, we don't have a name picked out for the neighborhood yet. But so I'm referring to it as, from using the seller's name. But it's on the corner of Strickland and Swift Creek Road. It's forty acres. We've got a mix of single-family detached and then also townhomes. The townhomes are going to be wider and a little bit bigger than what we're building and currently building down in Smithfield. These are twenty-two foot wide. The homes, most homes built today are typically, you see a forty-foot wide house. That's what we're proposing here. And then if you see here on the plan, we have a large park area in the middle. We've got, similar to Franklin that we did in Smithfield, when you drive in there, we have a kind of a central park area where we, it's a gathering space. We've got open grass fields for kids to play on, we've got a pergola, nice feature when you drive in. Kind of sets the tone for the neighborhood, we have dog park there and a playground. And so we see something similar here to kind of have this central gathering area for the neighborhood. So that's why we have that. And I think that's about two, a little over, a little under two and a half acres that we're utilizing for that. And then the main connection, I know one of the questions that came up from staff was whether or not this would require TIA. We, we met with DOT and because of the forty-two or seventy business forty-two improvements and Swift Creek becoming a major indoor door, we felt like the main entrance would be off of there. They did not require TIA, but they are going to require us to do turn lanes. So a left end, right over, yes ma'am, yes ma'am. They're only requiring it at that entrance. The secondary entrance over off of Strickland, they're, they're not requiring any improvements there, only on. Yes ma'am, yes ma'am. We, this is, like I said, this is a mix of townhomes and single-family detached. The main entrance.
Is the side over to the right, is that wetlands or just open space? Yes.
You have a stream here?
Right.
Would you, I'm sorry, would you mind lifting that up because it's right in front of the camera?
No.
How? This is the camera right here that are online, thank you. Or to the side, either way.
Okay, so, so that is, that is a stream here, so that is open space? And it will not be developed? It's going to be left like it is with trees and, I mean, are you gonna?
It's, I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
Are you gonna, is it going to be open so that it can be used or is it just going to be tree lined?
Tree line. This is a protected buffer.
Right.
For this rough area buffer, so there's fifty foot here. We will have to develop here. There will be some grading back behind these lots here. We obviously can't go into these, the restricted buffer, but there'll be some grading here. And the only thing that could change depending on the sewer, we're working with the county right now and we're working at, doing a pump station upgrade at Traylee.
Okay.
And I'm negotiating with the property owners over here to get sewer resements.
Okay.
If that does not come to fruition, I would have to build a pump station here. The county would like me to exhaust all efforts with the Traylee upgrade first. And then if that doesn't come to fruition, then I would, they would allow me to build a pump station. So there could be a pump station right here.
Okay.
Hopefully we don't, that doesn't end up occurring.
But, but the rest of that would be left green, I mean?
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Okay.
And then we have this large park area here, which will be, we will clear and grade that and then.
So you've got, you've got townhouses at the bottom and single-family at the top?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I, and right now, I suspect we're going to have more single-family and fewer townhomes. But right now, that, it just depends on, I'm working on the demand down here. I went with the higher density because of the off-site improvements. But there could be, we could end up coming in with, with fewer townhomes and more single-family detached. I'm not, not sure yet what that number will end up being, but that's, that's the direction we're laying in right now.
Okay. Does council have any questions?
Yes ma'am, I do. Can I start? I kind of. Good evening, sir, I'm councilmember McGowan and I have, I do have some questions. I want to refer you to the page Finding of Fact. And a couple of things that I, I see in here. Paragraph one refers to standard specifications, ensure, promote the public health, all that good stuff. And it says, then it says, any deviation from town standards are in accordance with best, well, let's stop right there. What, are there any deviations from town standards? Because these are your words, they're not standard words. And I'm just curious if there are any deviations that are not in accordance with town standards.
Yes. So we, we have, one of the things that, there were a couple of items that came up, and to answer your question, I'm going to go off topic for a second.
I do that all the time, go right ahead.
But I, something for, important for you guys, for y'all to know is we had two different, two meetings with the planning board. There was some concern about the setback, setbacks that we had requested originally. Typically I ask for more, in the, in the, when I'm going through rezoning, you want flexibility when these plans, because when you get into the CDs, you know, there's little nuances. So you like to have some, some room to play. And so we originally asked for five-foot side setbacks. That was a concern that the fire department had, so we went back and changed that to eight-foot, which is in the town ordinance. So that was one thing that we had deviated from, but, but we, during our two meetings with the planning, planning board, we, we changed that, increased it to eight feet. The lot width is fifty-six feet. That allows for eight-foot side setbacks and a forty-foot wide product. We have a building separation of twenty feet. Street width, minimum of twenty. I don't think we, we don't have. The wets, the wets, what is the width of streets? Yeah, we have twenty-seven feet back to back.
The parking on one side.
I'm not sure why this has got twenty feet here in this listed. It should be twenty-seven feet, which is the town standard. We would like to use valley curb. And the reason for the valley curb, and I'm not sure if that's a deviation or not from standard is, so with valley.
Can you define valley curb?
Yeah, so valley curb is a, is a curb, so your standard curb is kind of an L shape. And valley curb is one that you can drive over.
All right, we're familiar with that then, okay.
So, and the reason for that is particularly with townhomes, whenever you go, what we found is the driveways are typically, you know, they're, you end up replacing, you put in the curb and then you end up taking it all out and replacing it with essentially valley curb for the driveway throats. And so it, it has a negative impact on the actual asphalt structure because you end up taking a whole line out. You're going to install it, take it out and put it back in. So majority of the towns we work with, they, they want the valley curb in those locations.
Okay, all right, and that's a deviation, but I, I fully understand that, that's okay.
Okay. And then the other thing that we, we worked out with the, during the planning, planning board meetings, there was a concern, these stub streets here, 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 they were concerned about a fire truck turnaround. And the Department of Insurance, which, which every town has to follow, they allow, they don't require a hammerhead turnaround for fire trucks if you have a stub street that's greater than a hundred and fifty feet. We're under a hundred and fifty feet here, but there was still concern from the fire department. So we, we said we would still put the hammerheads in. So we're going to do a hundred and fifty-foot hammerheads at each one of those stub streets so that to alleviate any of their concerns on the fire safety. And then also part of those stub streets that came out of that planning board meeting was no parking, we'll post no parking signs on one side of the street. Probably along the side, where the lots are, the side of it. Here, there's no parking. And that could, the HOA can help enforce that as well.
Okay.
So those were some of the things that we worked out during the, during the.
Okay. Let me, I'll move on because I know a couple of other questions also. And I'm still, still on the findings of fact, I'm in paragraph two now. It says, "The development and its uses will comply with the required regulations and standards of development ordinance and the standards requested by the owner and applicant within the conditional zoning request." Now I go back to the original conditional zoning request and I look at paragraph five, which is conditional zoning request, and I just highlighted certain parts and it says, conditional zoning districts are with conditions voluntarily added by the applicant. I'm, I'm not familiar with that. That's something you all added or is that a standard on this form?
So, so some of the things that we added were the hammerhead turnaround, the no parking on one side of the street.
All right.
We also added, you know, the town staff requested that we put in a ten, ten-foot pedestrian path here for future connectivity along.
Okay.
So we, we offered that up.
Okay.
And golf carts and landscaping buffer.
Okay, let me move on to my, a couple, I'm just about done here by the way. Paragraph three on the same finding of fact, you refer to buffers. You refer to buffers, what, basically what kind of buffers are you talking about?
So those are perimeter.
For adjoining property values, just, I mean, we've had builders come in before and they say, oh, we're going to have buffers and it's going to be great. And then when you look at the actual design, the largest piece of vegetation in there is eighteen inches.
Well, some of them, so typically on your landscape buffers, you have, you're required to put in understory trees, you have some larger canopy trees, and then you have understory shrubbery. And the shrubbery is what ends up being eighteen inches.
Yeah.
Typically, when you install an understory tree, they typically are anywhere from, you know, four to six feet tall when they're installed. And then the, the canopy trees, they're, they range anywhere from six to eight feet when they're installed.
Would you or have you, not would you, because that's asking for a decision and I certainly don't want that tonight. But have you considered a raised, that buffer, but on a raised piece of property? In other words, building a piece, building a buffer, or what do you, what do you call it, a berm? You know, maybe two or three-foot berm and then adding that on top. That helps the neighborhood, it helps with the noise, it helps with your development, and it helps with these fine people that live out there also.
So we typically, that's a great question. And depending on the, how the property transitions into one another. So typically, when we install burners, we typically go along roads here and here. When they back up to houses, it can become a little more challenging depending on how drainage works. So if somebody's property is sheet draining off onto our property, I can't hinder their or stop the flood, their natural flow of water. So we, we apply it where we can. I just, I can't say that it's applicable to each situation.
Okay.
Because of, because of storm.
I, I understand. Final question for me, how much open space do you have in total?
I mean, it's. So we're required to have just under three acres and we have twelve point eight-six acres.
On its face, that's great, four times the requirement, you beat it, you've exceeded it. But my question is, out of those twelve acres, how many acres are just non-buildable anyway? So there's no money to be had.
Well, certainly the buffer down here. Right, so that, this, we were just, I was discussing with the mayor, so I think that, but we do have here in the middle two point three seven acres here in the middle.
Okay.
That I could usually build on that and, but I'm utilizing, so there, out of the required two point nine five, we have.
You got two point seven there plus, okay, that, that's, that's fine. Are any of your amenities that you're going to include in here, whatever they are, but that also includes the park? Is that going to be open for use by the neighbors, just for as a neighborly type thing?
They're typically restricted to the homeowners. They're, it's, it's not typically for public use.
All right, I thought I'd ask, and the last question I have for, how many residents are here tonight regarding this? Okay, so there's, there's a fair number, okay, thank you very much, I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
My first, my first question would be, in the, the open space area between the, the homes and townhomes, I think you said two point three seven acres. What are you planning to do with that?
So we have in the, in the conditions, we've got, there, there are five options here, we, we're guaranteeing to put four of the five. One of them is a covered pavilion area, gatherings, covered pavilion, playground, fire pit with paver patio and walking trail around the storm, stormwater management facility and then dog park. So we're, we have some flexibility here in picking four of those five.
Okay.
And, and I suspect just based on on being here, we're going to incorporate those items in that central park area.
But, but my, my thing is, we're not just going to leave it open, we're going to do some, some type of amenities for the community?
Yes, yes sir, there's, yeah, we've, we've got, we've put in here, we're going to put four of these five in.
Okay.
A while ago you mentioned TIA, what is TIA?
I'm sorry, that's a traffic impact analysis.
Okay.
So some neighborhoods depending on the size of it.
Right.
DOT.
And have they done that?
They, they, DOT said that this did not warrant a TIA, a full-blown TIA. So they, they just said you need to put turn lanes in.
Okay.
Here. That, that was essentially their, they, they look at what the traffic counts are on these neighborhoods, what the future traffic count is. And then they say, without doing a full-blown analysis, that we would hire an individual to do.
Correct.
They said it wasn't required, which is that TIA. They just said if you put this, all, all we're going to ask you to do is put the wiring in at the main entrance.
Okay, and how many, I, I know you said it may be less townhomes and more single-family. How many, how many, how many occupying residents are you anticipating for this development?
So there's, there, what we have proposed is two hundred and forty-two units, okay?
That includes both?
I'm sorry?
Does that include both?
Yes.
Res, uh, single-family and, and townhome?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
How many people that, you know, typically, a lot of times we.
No, no, I, I was just wondering about the number of, of roof, so-called rooftops.
Yes, sir, that's what we're asking.
How, how large are your homes going to be?
They're going to range, the townhomes, fourteen to eighteen, nineteen, hundred square feet, single-family. A ranch-style product would be around sixteen, they could get as much as thirty-three, around three thousand with a single family.
What is your plan? What, what is your plan? That's, that's, that's a big range. I mean, we're talking about starter home and then we're talking about, I mean, thirty-two hundred is, is a pretty big home.
They're, they're going to range in that, you know, we, we have different product types. Every neighborhood we go into, some of them will have a ranch-style product that's sixteen hundred square feet to eighteen hundred square feet, one-story. Then you have the two-story product would be ranged between two thousand to three thousand square feet, there, it's.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a pretty big range to me, I mean, I don't develop, but.
Well, they're.
But in, in one neighborhood from a starter home to a thirty-two hundred square foot, a, a home, that, 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 that's just a, it seems like a big range to me.
We typically have, so with a townhome product, you'll have maybe eight different floor plans. You know, some of them are for, for some, a single parent with kids, some are for, you know, single people. You know, there's just different types of uses, so you try to accommodate for the different fire profiles. So you could have with a, with a ranch style, you may be catering to a retired person. Or you could go with a two-story, which is typically with somebody that would want to, you know, maybe have a family, two, three kids. So there, you know, the, the range is, we, we like to have a multiple product offerings. I mean, just at the, for example, in the five lots we did in Smithfield, range is between eighteen hundred and thirty-two hundred, just in that, those five lots.
Yeah, yeah. Just seems like a big, big, big jump for, in one neighborhood.
Well, when you have two hundred and forty-two houses, there's, you know, you're, you have to have a pretty big product offering to be able to.
Depends on what you want to sell.
I'm sorry?
You could say twenty-four hundred to thirty-two hundred, just as easy as sixteen to thirty-two hundred. I mean, it depends on what you want to sell.
But it depends on the, and, and that's a great question. I'm, I'm just saying for a ranch, ranch-style prod, prod house, it doesn't typically get any greater than sixteen to eighteen hundred square.
Yeah.
That's the reason, the, the single, the one story is the, is the diff, is the big swing.
Is sewer already approved for this, 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 so you're, so, so how long are you talking? So you're talking years down the road? I mean, you're, because there's no sewer availability?
Well, we're working on that now, so we have the, the county, through working with Shandra and her staff, there's a couple of different options. I can go through Traylee and do some upgrades to their pump station.
Okay.
With the county's upgrades that they're doing, there is capacity in this area with all the upgrades that they're currently doing. So that's option one, option, that's their preferred route because they don't want additional pump stations. The second option is for me to build my own pump station and then to tie into either the existing force main or run a new force main further down the street.
Okay, and you mentioned the fire department, that, that they had kind of didn't like the, the deadhead type, type streets. At what point were, were they notified about this? Because this is the first time I'm hearing about it. this, because this is the first time I'm hearing about it, so were, did, did they get involved before the town?
Well, the, so we met with the planning, or, we had, we had two planning board meetings.
Okay.
Um, I tabled the first meeting, uh, because there was, uh, some concern about it, and I wanted to have ample time to discuss it with them, and so we found some resolutions to those.
So, so, so did it come from the planning board, or did it come from the fire department? Because you said the fire department.
They, well, one of the departments, yeah, one of the gentlemen is the.
Marvin is on the planning board, so he made the comment about the fire department.
Okay.
That's how it came into play.
All right, well, I'll just make sure it didn't get to the fire department.
No, 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 Marvin Dodd is on the planning, planning board, so, that's how it came.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, I, and, and I did know that, but I'd forgotten, so if the town was to adopt a, a, uh, an ordinance to where you can't park on town streets, to keep them, keep them free-flowing, because we know once one person parks, then three, four, or fifty are, are gonna park on the street, so if, if we at some point in time decide that we're not gonna park on town streets, we're gonna leave them free-flowing, because good Lord knows, we have, we have enough traffic, and we don't need a hinder, and then you're talking about two hundred and forty-something, um, would you still be in compliance if, 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 if we adopted that resolution?
If, if that was, uh, I'm not a lawyer, but if, if that was what I understand, if that's imposed, then it would apply to this neighborhood, uh.
Because with parking on the street, the first red flag goes at me is, you're gonna have a driveway that's big enough for one, for one car, and they gotta park on the street, and, 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 and in my business, I see it all the time, they have one car in the driveway, and they have three in the street, and because, because the forethought wasn't enough planning, to make sure these lot sizes were big enough to park two cars, maybe three, um, in the driveway, like, like the sensible thing to do, rather than saying, oh, well, we're gonna park it on the street, that eventually the town's gonna take care of, so, you know, it, it, it just, it just sends up a red flag to me, that we're not gonna have enough parking, um, in, 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 in front of the house, like, is, what is the norm?
So we have, um, so I wanna speak to the two different product types, uh, so for the single-family detached, uh, the forty-foot wide product, um, has two-car garages, and then has, so sixteen-foot wide, so you would be able to park four cars in that, so with the, the townhome section, that's always a bigger problem than the single-family, so the townhome, what we do, we have off-street parking areas, uh, there are different areas of the neighborhood, uh, for, um, for either overflow parking, um, for resident, or for guests, when they come in, so they're strategically set around here, uh, to accommodate for, for that, and with, with the driveway widths, it isn't, with driveway widths in a townhome, unless you have a side corner lot, um, it's, there's not enough room for somebody to park in between the.
And, and, and you're right, and, and, and I agree, there's a difference between the, the residential and the townhomes, the, the, the houses, you know, my only thing is, is could we take, and, 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 and I'm just throwing this out there, instead of parking on the street, um, you know, we talk about hindering a fire truck, um, in, in neighborhoods I go to, they allow parking on the street, some of them, and, but others, they have designated a area where you park, and if, if, if you need to park other than in your driveway, you park in that parking lot, you know, I, I'm, I'm not saying that, 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 that's, that's really necessary, but it's just one thing to kinda, kinda pull a red flag out, because I'm all over the place, and, and I see a lot of these developments.
And one thing that's not shown here, is in that park area, there will be a parking lot, if, if we need to, if you would like us to add that as a condition, that there'd be a parking lot, that we'll have a parking lot in the open space.
Well, I, I, I'm just, I'm just one, one voice on, on this, so I, I'm just voicing my, you know, you presenting, I'm, I'm voicing, and I'm asking questions, um, the only other question I have is, Wendy, where, I, I, I'm looking at this map, and I've lived here for all my life, can you tell me where it is?
And go past those three or four houses.
Uh-huh.
It's directly across Old English Court.
Okay, so it's the one, it, it, so it's the one that we, we brought into the town limits years ago, that was cleared and never developed, and now it's grown back up?
It was timbered.
Yeah, it was timbered.
Yeah, it was timbered.
Okay, but, but, so, so when you go past the third or fourth house, is the, is the tract of land between there and the, the new development that's going in?
In between this one and right at the beginning.
Correct, I know where that is, that, that's, that's, I'm, I know where that is.
Basically, son.
Yeah, okay, I'm good, I'm good.
Can I get a, I, I'm not looking for a, a, a promise or anything, I'm looking for a quick assurance, that we, we have problems, we've had problems in the past with builders, and if your project goes forward as planned, I just want an assurance from you, that you're gonna work closely with Wendy, to complete punch lists, and get that thing turned over to the HOA, uh, I don't like builders that drag their feet and go, I built it, I'm moving on to the next one, if you'll just give us that assurance, I'd feel better about it.
You will, uh, it's, it's, uh, I'd, no, no concern about you having any problems with us with that.
We get, we get monthly reports, and if it says, waiting on builder for punch list, waiting on builder for punch list.
It, you know, my hope is, this isn't the first time I'm, I'm in front of y'all, you know, we wanna do a quality, I mean, we have a reputation in, in a lot of these towns, in Fuquay, Lillington, and you can ask Smithfield, we've done everything that we've committed to, so I have no, no concern of making that promise.
Anyone else have any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
Carolyn had one, Carolyn?
I'm just, I'm, ask Wendy, that if I flip back to page, and I just had it, planning board recommendation.
It's on page three.
Page three. Well, I'm trying to find page three, the right page.
Can we, I know what you're gonna ask, and I'm gonna say something else, although, can I address that?
Absolutely, you, you probably answered my question.
Okay.
All right, I'm good, Mayor.
Okay, Carol?
Okay, you were saying that, um, the, the single homes was at the top, like, so it's just a few of those, but most of those down in that ground area, that's the townhomes, right?
Correct.
And you were saying that, okay, that, that, okay, they will be facing Swift Creek.
Mm-hmm.
When you go in, you said you were gonna have one entrance to go in, that, you was gonna have one entrance to go in that side, right?
There, there's.
From Swift Creek, you got one entrance going in that, in those townhomes.
There's, there's two entrances total, there's one off of Swift Creek, and there's one off of.
Strickland, you said there was one off of Strickland, so that's down near the single homes, that one, there it is, you had the one that Wendy has, but you only have one down here, where it seemed like, that you will, we will have two, or, is, so that area there, you can go either way, you can go, like, she got the, okay, okay, all right, okay.
The entrances are not, I'm sorry, didn't.
Yeah, I, the entrances are not what?
The entrances, like this entrance over here on Swift Creek, isn't just for the townhomes, this entrance over here isn't just for the single family, they're shared, um, you know, the predominant entrance will be this one, the folks that live here will come through here to get to these houses, um, the majority, unless they're coming from, they've gone from seventy-five, five thousand, then they come back to this one, uh, but most of the people are gonna be coming from this.
Just that one entrance right there.
Just because of the, the improvements that are happening on, uh, with five forty, with forty-two, um, highway, or seventy.
Seventy.
Interstate.
Seventy.
Seventy Interstate.
That's the bypass, I said, uh, was incorrect.
Seventy Interstate.
Turning it into forty, Interstate forty-two, and this being a major interchange, most of the traffic flow is gonna come from that, we anticipate coming in that direction.
Right, so that's down, and this, this part, right here, you're talking about, that, that, um, development is right down from Treely, right, Treely is on down, on the right?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Any more questions?
So, just, the, the main entrance that you just said, is that off of Swift Creek Road, I, cause I can't see it.
Yes, yes.
But, so we have a limited, uh, road frontage here.
Correct.
Uh, so this is it, if, when the road starts to dive down.
Absolutely.
This string comes through here, and so that, this is, uh, probably this is the best access point, uh, for that connection.
And see, that's what I struggle with, too, you're going down a hill here, down a hill here, and, and, I mean, I take a chance every time I pull out of my subdivision, because I'm right down the road from there, um.
There's gonna be a turn lane there, we'll get that.
So you, the turn lanes have.
That's true.
So you'll have a D cell, if you're turning right, there'll be a D cell lane getting off, and then if you're coming the other direction, there'll be a middle lane left over, uh, coming in, so there'll be through traffic, and then people turning in will get off, and then make a right.
So that, that's gonna, that's gonna help that.
Yeah, I, I just think about people pulling out of that subdivision, going to Swift Creek Road, going I forty-two, you know, and then there, there's people flying down that hill.
There is a hill, yeah.
I mean, you know, I, but, but, you know, DOT, I, I don't guess DOT cares about that, but, um, you know, because he's in compliance with, with, with DOT, so, um, but anyway, okay, thank you.
Well, we, we looked at doing both access points off of, uh, Strickland, but then you create a similar situation at the other intersection, if you're driving all the traffic to that location, to Strickland Road.
Yeah.
We felt like it's better to split it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm not sure that, that you have, have, or not necessarily you, but, but the homeowners, who will eventually be in that subdivision, or that development, it, it, I mean, because if you go on Strickland Road, you're talking about thousands of cars, too, so I don't know, there's, that, that there's a good option for use of, of that land to, to get people in and out, um, but, because once your development's done, and once the other developments are done on Strickland Road, it's still the same road that was a dirt road that I used to ride down when I was sixteen, they ain't done nothing to it, so they don't plan on doing anything to it, um, so I don't know that there's a good, good option, but, but, I mean, we gotta have two ways in and two ways out, and I just wanna say, thank you for answering my questions, you, you, I mean, you have answered everything that I've asked, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome, thanks, good question.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak to council? Uh, you need to come to the microphone, please, sir. And please state your name.
My name is Charles Hansen, I'm adjacent to the property that's being developed.
Say your own, what's your address?
Honey Walter Circle.
Okay.
And I'm actually. Problem that I see, and I'm not trying to, trying to off the development, I'm worried about, the Strickland changes that are being made, with not allowing traffic to go out on the seventy bypass, now we're sending them to the right, once that's blocked off, they're gonna go down to Swift Creek, so all that traffic's gonna come down there, or they can go left, and they gotta go past the disco and all the way up to.
Seventy Business.
Seventy Business, so anyone going in and out of there, is gonna come down Swift Creek Road, as you said, down the hill, down the hill, and in there, and out of there, plus you got eight hundred more houses.
What was your address again?
Honey Walter Circle.
Walter.
I'm in Glenview.
Okay.
In, in back there, you know, plus you got eight hundred more houses going back there, and then there's more land that's gonna be developed back there, so I think the DOT really needs to look at Strickland Road, and the access to the bypass, with another overbridge turnaround, and so on, to support all this development that's gonna happen.
I agree, I think they need to look at Strickland Road, they need to, one thing, they need to straighten it out a little bit, but.
Well, yeah, that turns a little bit, but, but, just, just being able to access seventy bypass with an overpass, they really need to put that in their plan, and I don't know what you all can do about that, but I think that'll put the pressure on.
All, all we can do is beg, because they don't give us anything, we, we just have to beg.
That's all I got, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address, please come to the platform, we need you to state your name and your address.
Oh, good afternoon, good evening, I say, my name is John Monroe, and I live thirteen thirty-two Swift Creek Road, and near about twenty-two years, and, uh, I'm kinda, my neighbor, uh, far as the traffic, uh, there's a lot that's right across the street, my house directly, was up for sale, and that sign is not there any longer, so I'm assuming it's sold, but I'm, I'm not positive of that, but I'm sure that, that two, it'll possibly be developed, so the traffic is just gonna be tremendous, so I don't know, like I say, I don't know if you guys can do about that, but I just don't see it being very, very good for us coming in and out, and we're getting a little age on ourselves, so, so, that means a lot, and also the noise, uh, I was in the military twenty-two years, and, uh, I got up, because I got tired of noise, okay, and I'm just hoping that, you know, it doesn't change my lifestyle, as far as the noise in, in my areas, nice and quiet there, and that's why I built there, so I just, just wanna just, you know, just give you that thought.
Thank you. Please. State your name and your address.
How you doing, my, how you doing, my name is Jack Moore, I live at twenty-nine Old English Court, and, um, I got a couple of questions, you've been speaking in terms of Old English Court, is where the second entrance is gonna be, all right, uh, right in front of houses?
Mm-hmm.
Then if he develops there, which way are those houses going to be facing, or the backyard's gonna be right in our backyard, across the street, how far are those houses gonna be in from the entrance?
Where is Old English Court on that map, sir?
It's right straight across from that entrance.
Not, not all of us can pinpoint that, so, gotcha, okay, thank you.
Now, if you go home to your, my home's right here, right at the entrance, first home, so I don't know, if you want to go home to your, how are these homes gonna face, are those backyards gonna face us, so we can hear all that noise, too, we're gonna have to deal with the traffic, but I don't think anything's gonna be done about it, but we're gonna have to have the noise, too, and develop those homes and put them in a situation, so we don't have to have all that in our backyard?
It, it, there's supposed to be a berm along that road, all the way Strickland.
Excuse me?
I think there's supposed to be a berm, I mean, landscaping, isn't there supposed to be landscaping?
What, Roy, is it Roy? Rob, Rob, can you answer any of that question there?
There's supposed to be landscaping along Strickland Road. There's supposed to be something to separate, because it's showing on that map right there.
There is a bike path.
That's, okay, there's a bike path, then a landscape, but.
I thought those paths were to be done later on.
They're supposed to be a part of.
Are they gonna be done at, at the beginning of development, and they, the development that will be done, the bike path, and when we, the buffer and all of that?
When they finish it.
When, when we build that phase, uh, I'm not sure how it's gonna be phased, we'll, we'll start up here at Swift Creek, but when we get to the development of that section, we'll, that, anything that backs up to Strickland Road will be built at that time, that we develop those lots.
Now, these are, let's just say these are your homes, I'm assuming these are your homes, so where your backyard, is it your backyard?
Yes, yes, sir.
Do they come right to the road?
Well, there's a.
Is there gonna be a fence or something here, for you, now, everybody has a right to their own life, and I have a right to. Now, everybody has a right to their own life, and I have a right to it. So they wanna have parties and do all that, that's their right, they're paying for it. But, what are we gonna have is those of us that's been here for the last fifteen, twenty, thirty years?
So there's...
Take that into account.
So we have, th- this, uh, this is a thirty-foot foot. We have to put a ten-foot path in there, so we have twenty feet to do the landscaping. We had originally designed this to be serpentine. I can agree to put a berm there, uh, within that twenty feet. Now your, your berm is not gonna be very tall, because you have the restriction of the ten-foot, it's twenty feet. Be what, three? Three, three, four feet tall, um, and, and still be able to maintain it. And then, in that thirty feet, there's a requirement of six evergreen trees for every hundred foot. There's six evergreen, this goes back to the question we were talking about earlier, so six overgreens, trees. Three canopy trees, which is the lower trees, or no, excuse me, taller trees, and then five undersory trees, and then twenty-five shrubs for every hundred feet. So that, uh, I'm not sure, that's pretty big frontage, but, um...
Yeah, and, and, and one thing to remember too is, the backyard, i- if it's a development, you can't have the front yard on Strickland Road because all the, the...
No, I don't want the front yard to fit the boat now, just saying.
Yeah, because, because you can't have everybody coming out on Strickland Road, you, we have to, to bring them out to a, a entrance now. You've brought up a good point for me. If those two subdivisions are coming together, I think we need to find out what DOT's plans is, um, just like in other parts of the county, when other subdivisions come together, what kind of traffic orientation they're gonna have. Um, are they gonna put up a stoplight to make it safe, or are they gonna put in a random valve? What, wh- wh- I mean, you have two pretty big subdivisions coming together on one road. Now, I think DOT's thing is, is, is probably about like the fire department life safety.
There's no room to widen the road unless you widen it on the development side. The other part right there, the houses are right here, like, my house is literally right there.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, is, i- is, first of all, is, is, if those two entrances are coming at the same point, which makes sense to me, for this subdivision to come out to Strickland Road here, this subdivision to come out to Strickland Road here. With, with that amount of, of trafficking, I realize that, that, that we're saying the main entrance is Swift Creek Road. Do, you know, is there something, uh, that, that DOT, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm just asking. That, that seems like a lot of vehicles coming out the one, one, one little road that used to be dirt road and...
That's a question that Wendy, DOT, and, and see what their comment would be.
Those twenty-eight hundred other homes in that new development that they're doing right now, I mean...
Not twenty-eight hundred.
What is it, three, three thousand?
No, no, not that.
Well, anyway, still and all, we still got, we can, we gotta count for people.
Yes, yeah, but that's not all gonna be built at one time, so... It's gonna be built in phases.
Okay. And let me ask you one more thing, that I'm kinda confused, cause I'm new here, even though I've been out here twenty years, but this is the town of Wilson Mills? It's being built in a town of Smithfield?
No, it's Wilson Mills.
So that where I live at is Wilson Mills?
No. This isn't Wilson Mills, you're in the county. You're still in, you're still in Johnston County. Yeah, but he's in Johnston County. Yeah, you're in the county.
But this is right across the street from me, and that's in Wilson...
So that means if you do anything on your property, you have to go to the town of Smithfield, not us. So, I mean, that, 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 that ain't our fault.
Okay, no, I just was wondering, cause I'm like, they're going, my, I got a Smithfield address, and it's right across the street, so I didn't... Okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to speak to council on this result? Okay?
Debbie Howard, two-two-one West Woodlong Drive, Smithfield. I have just a question and comment. I'll ask you the question so you can find out from this gentleman. At the two roads that are stubbed in, we, my husband and I, we actually own the property right beside this, where the two roads are gonna be stubbed. Are there gonna be gates or something there?
Uh, we can, we can put up, uh, so they have, there are these, uh, diamonds that you can put up that are red...
Like with posts, so they got to run into the post if they go in.
Right, right.
Okay.
To answer your question about them being stubbed, that, it's someday, now, you sell your property, or you get sold, and they want to develop it, we don't have to then put it in.
Totally get that. Now, my next is just a comment. There's been a lot of talk about berms. Um, I've had a lot of experience with berms, and berms are really, really pretty when the developer puts them in, and...
But they don't stay that way.
In five, six years from now, the HOA dissolves, and who looks after the berms? Nobody. And they become a nightmare, but that's just my point of view.
Four cents worth, okay. Anyone else? I'm sorry, my microphone is, I don't know what's wrong, but y'all just gonna have to put up with it, cause I can't do nothing about it. It's talking back to me, but, um, anyone else wishing to make a comment?
Oh, can I say one thing to that?
Yes, yes.
So, um, one of the, you know, there's pluses and minuses with everything. One of the pluses with townhomes is the HOA maintains exterior, they maintain all the yards. They're funded, better, they're funded more money, um, and so they're, they're kept. There, a lot of people don't like the townhomes, but whenever you actually drive through the community, everything's a lot more uniform. Um, so they actually have a better, uh, appearance in a lot of ways, instead of an individual taking care of their own yards. So, you know, the, the concern about the HOA dissolving, um, you know, from, from a neighborhood this size, uh, it's, that's a highly, highly unlikely, uh, scenario. I mean, I know some, where you have problems is where you have like a twenty-lot neighborhood that's not well-funded, and then they end up dissolving, uh, but when you have larger neighborhoods, they typically are well-funded. Just, just, uh...
I, I meant to make one more comment. I just wanted it on record that we own the property right beside it, and we have no problem with this subdivision at all. So, just letting you know that.
Okay. Okay. I understand, and I won't cancel, I want you to listen to me, feel careful. This is a conditional...
If you'll back up from it and let her turn the volume up just a little bit.
I've got mine, and I don't know why it's acting ugly. Okay, you turn me up, and I'll set back here. On page four, there is a conditional rezon statement. And these are the conditions that we are going to approve, and Wendy's going to address these for us. These are conditions that were approved and put in place by the planning board.
I have also written down some of the concerns of the citizens, and we'll bring those back to you for the council to decide if they are to be added to those conditions or not. Before I do that, I need to answer Councilman Brown's question. Planning board recommendation is approval, even though it's inconsistent with the future land use map. The reason it's inconsistent is because prior councils had hoped to make this a school site. This site is not big enough for the Johnston County school system, therefore, that was not an option. Does that answer your question? Okay. Yes.
And I just wanted to make sure that was the inconsistency, that it was planned for a school one day, but it's no longer...
Okay. That. Um, this is a conditional rezon. We're gonna get a little stickier on our conditions tonight than we have in the past. Um, lot width at fifty-six feet, side setbacks at eight feet, building separation, which is the distance in between your two townhome buildings at twenty feet, street width is twenty-seven feet back to back, which is back of curb to back of curb.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
Not twenty?
Right. Use them valley curb instead of traditional curbing. Hammerhead in the buffer zone to the stubout streets at a hundred and twenty feet. That allows for our fire department's largest fire truck to be able to get in there and turn around to head back out, should they have to go in. And no parking on one side of the stubout street. That was the conditions agreed to by the planning board. What's been brought up tonight is adding the buffer, adding the berm to the buffers on the Strickland Road side of the development.
I have a question with that. Do we need to say the height went, I mean, the height of that berm, or we just wanna leave it? Cause I don't think that...
It could only go so high for the width that they had, so we could possibly say maximum height based on width available?
Okay, so do we want to add the berm and then the vegetation on top of that, or do we just want to add the vegetation? This is something we need to...
Yes.
This is something we...
That's the question, and the reason that was thrown out was because the berm will help with the noise that's gonna be going across the street to the other neighborhood.
So if, if we add this, this will be a condition that will be in this...
Adding vegetation to the berm. That's, that's probably necessary to prevent erosion, to hold it in place. Right. He's, he's gotta have a comment on that.
Okay, so...
Cause we addressed that earlier, he'll have a comment.
Do you have a comment on that?
So, just a second. Wait a bit, uh, I think we can get, uh, say like a minimum of three feet. Normally you like to have them, you don't wanna have it just a straight wall, you wanna have it sculpting. I'd like to have the ability to serpentine to walk through that.
You're talking about the sidewalk? Yes, I agree with that.
And I don't know if there's way... And, and the other thing is, is for there to be, for the amount of plants, uh, for anyone to say, uh, plant planner, and, he was saying that it, twenty feet is gonna conduct the amount of plants as smart to get it all on top of it.
I'm not sure you can do that anyway because of power lines. I mean, you, you going, you, don't you have power lines on that side of the, the road? I'm pretty sure you do, so I don't know how you put a planted tree on top of the berm.
Ask the gentleman that lives there, are the power lines on your side of the street or the other side, the new side? There we go. They're what, they're putting them, or they're moving them over? Okay. So there's your answer. Yeah, that, that's, that's gonna come down the line, I mean, can, I mean, and trimming takes care of that, so that doesn't concern me, but, you know, I, I'd like to see, uh, vegetation on the sides of it, not necessarily just on the top, but on the sides to help hold it. I'm sure your landscape guy would agree that you gotta hold that vegeta, or the, the soil in place somehow. If you go down, for example, one that always strikes me, I don't know if you ever had the chance to go down Powhatan towards, uh, uh, Clayton, and that development on the side, it's only got about fifteen or twenty homes, but they have probably the prettiest and most effective berm I have ever seen. And they have large two-story homes, and you can hardly see it from the road. I love it, it's beautiful.
It's, it's sort of high, though.
Well, it's, it's very high, I understand it, but, but the vegetation, uh, the way they've got it laid out and whatever, anyway, it's, it's very nice, but...
Okay, but for, for this, we're gonna have to figure out how to word it so that he can do it and not go against what we're approving, and Wendy can inspect it. So we've got to figure out how exactly we want this to be worded.
Well, the planned buffer vegetation is, is acceptable, as you said it right there. I don't have any, I'm not here to say we want a, you know, an azalea and a dogwood or whatever. I'm saying that the, the, the planned vegetation that you've already described to us, that's sufficient to me to add to the berm, whether it's on top or on the sides and the top. I don't care, either one.
Evening, my name's Tony Tate, I'm a landscape architect and land planner, working on a project. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So, in that situation, the power company does limit the height underneath the power line. So the power line's gonna be located typically right on the right of way. So our, our buffer is gonna be thirty feet beyond that. So we would take the largest canopy trees and place them on the outside, so we can still do those. The understory trees would be underneath the power line where they're allowed to be, and then the shrubs and other things would be on top of the berm, and we would weave those in and out uh, along with the sidewalk or side path, so we could get all that in there, just putting them in the correct locations. And so, if, if we say that the, the berm is a minimum three-foot height, that will allow us to sculpt it up, and so that it's not, like you said, one long, straight, like a pile of dirt. So we would sculpt it like you would see on the edge of a golf course or something, so...
So what you're saying is, if we approved a berm of three-foot high with vegetation placed on top of that, that was something you could agree to?
With some of the vegetation, yes, we couldn't get it all on there.
I know, but around.
Correct.
So, so if we said something to the effect of, if we put in another condition, it says, minimum three-foot berm added to planned buffer vegetation, that pretty much says it all, does it not?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. Cut to the quick here.
Okay, Wendy, anything else?
Okay, Councilwoman McGee, please say that again.
Uh, minimum three-foot berm added to planned buffer vegetation. And let them figure out if it's on the top or the side, or whatever is best for aesthetics and, and effectiveness.
Okay. Um, another thing was installing the signs with the stops on them at the stubouts to keep people from leaving this property, going on to the neighboring property.
That's, that's not in the plans now.
That's not in the conditions now, no.
Say it again, Wendy?
Installing the stops with the signs on it in the...
Stops?
Where the, where the stubs are.
What do you mean, stops with signs on top?
It would be a post with the triangle on it.
Okay.
Telling people you can't go any further, so they can't go on to the neighboring property.
Okay.
And it was discussed, nothing was decided, on adding a parking lot inside that open space to allow for more parking.
I think that needs to be a condition.
Right now, they're required one extra parking place per residence.
Right.
For one extra parking place per three residences.
Okay, so we need to...
Say that condition again.
That we, that we asked them to put a parking lot in the, um, I wanna say in the, um, open space on the side, or the open space in the park?
That would be the main open space area according to their plans.
So, a parking lot would take out that center section right there?
Not all of it, not all of it.
Well, enough of it, okay.
Could...
Alright.
I have a question.
That's an option, that, that's your decision to add that in there.
That's not a condition, that's...
No, no, I'm just bringing that up, because that's something that was...
They're the, they're the builders, I don't wanna make, you know, we're not designing their place.
If, if we required a parking, you said there was gonna be a pond on the right-hand side?
An S C M pond?
Yeah, right. So where is that gonna be? Could, could parking be put over there? Next to those townhouses? Okay.
We'll end up putting more than we have here, but I, I think, uh.
A small part.
Question here, we can put a parking lot in here and it's not gonna take up a lot of it.
Okay.
Okay.
How many, how many spaces would you say minimum? At least twenty? Okay, so we put that into conditions that the builder would. Twenty spaces for additional park. Okay, great. Thank you.
If y'all remember the problem we had with the builder that had, the gentleman has come and complained and complained. This is why we're trying to get this correct. We want the condition to be stated, but we don't have that problem. Okay?
Okay, got it. So Wendy, I wrote that down as allowing space for at least twenty additional, uh, vehicles to be parked.
So, does anyone else? Have any questions or comments for that?
Just a question for the, for counselor. Counselor, when we, whoever makes the, the motion, if they, if they make motion number one to approve it. Is it, will it suffice just to say that from agricultural to mixed use with conditions as amended? Or do we have to go through everyone?
I suggest going through the, the-
Okay, don't make it easy. All right.
Well, there's been lots of discussion in that tonight about conditions, so.
I'm fine with it.
Any more questions? Any more comments?
If, if I might also add, um. Be sure that in the motion, there is a. You, that if you are, that you make a statement as to the consistency with the master plan, the town's master use plan. Which I think the planning board indicated that it was not consistent with the map and I believe it. But only the map, um, and-
So the proposal, it must be consistent with plain use map?
It, it need, it need not be. In fact, I believe it's inconsistent with the map. But that's not a bar to it being rezoned. If you do approve it, it simply amends the map.
So it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't have to be consistent with the map, right?
I, I guess it's correct. And suffice it to say that you would be adopting the statement of consistency that has been prepared. In addition, you have to make a statement as to the reasonableness of this rezon. Or if you decide to vote against it, the unreasonableness of it. And there's a statement that looks like it's been prepared for you. So you could add that to your motion.
Where is that?
H four.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on it. Okay, I'm, I'm ready to go with it if you are. Law school, I should've gone there. Learned how to take notes.
Do I have a mo- do I have a motion that we approve the rezoning of this parcel?
Motion that we approve the rezoning.
You have to stay with this.
I D one seven J zero seven zero two two A. Across from Old English Court with the conditions. As listed plus the conditions that we have added.
Could you please be specific because there has been discussion about additional conditions that I have not. Okay. Been clear that they're accepted or not.
I, I've written them all down, J C. Do you want me to go?
Sure.
You wanna withdraw yours and I'll start mine again?
Go ahead.
Okay, all right, here goes. I make a motion to approve the conditional re, uh, rezone of parcel. Identification one seven J zero seven zero two two A parentheses Strickland Road across from Old English Court. End of parentheses from agricultural to mixed use with the following conditions, lot width fifty-six feet, side setbacks eight feet. Building separation twenty feet, street width minimum twenty-seven feet, use valley curbs, hammerhead in buffer zone a hundred and twenty feet, no parking on one side of the street. Minimum three foot berm added to planned buffer vegetation. Install warning signs at stubs, allow space for at least twenty additional parking spaces as defined by builder. And this proposal need not be consistent with the map and, um. The adopted state of consistency, is that correct, counselor? No, it's not.
I would, I would merely. Have moved to adopt the statement of consistency and reasonableness that has been prepared by town staff.
Okay, and I would move that we adopt the statement of consistency and reasonableness as prepared by the town staff.
Okay.
That's really good.
Motion made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Trippett. All in favor?
Builder has a-
Yes.
Shall I modify that, counselor? All right, I, I will modify, um, the, with modifications to the conditions to state that. The minimum three foot berm added to planned buffer vegetation be on Strickland Road.
Thank you. Okay. Motion made, seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Okay. At this time, I call the public hearing for the rezoning. I want us to amend the zoning of forty-two Towton Farm Road, partial one seven K zero eight zero two eight A. Anyone wishing to come forward, please do so and state your name and your address.
We have Mr. David Bergmark here that would like to make a presentation. Before we get into this, this is a general rezon, not conditional.
Good evening, mayor, members of the board. Is this looking me up? Okay.
Okay.
All right. Uh, my name is David Bergmark. I'm a senior planner with McAdams, uh, the applicant for this case on behalf of Johnsons County Public School System. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you a little bit about this case. Um, as stated, this is, uh, rezoning, general use rezoning request for forty-two Towton Farm Road, a little over two hundred acres. So a very large, uh, suitable sized site for this use, uh, that was recently annexed into your corporate limits. Uh, but it would need, needs to be given a Wilson's Mills zoning designation. Uh, it was zoned I two, an industrial zoning under, uh, Johnston County. Now, you'll notice I don't have a visual for you. That is because this is just a general use rezoning, so there is no attached site plan to it. There is no attached zoning conditions to it. Uh, we all, uh, you all know that what kind of initiated this process was the desire, uh, for Johnston County Public Schools to identify a site for a new high school. Um, as well as potential additional area for a middle school as well. Uh, they started this process, I think, a little over a year ago. Uh, starting, going through site selection, starting conversations with the county, starting, and then starting conversations with Wilson's Mills as well as the decision was made. Uh, that it was more desirable to, to bring this into town of Wilson's Mills, name it after Wilson's Mills and go through your, your processes, uh, your site and review. Uh, which, uh, with McAdams, we have familiarity with, uh, more, probably more so on the residential side. I'm not sure if we've done any other schools here. Uh, but we have gone through your, uh, development processes, worked with your staff, um, and, and are, are comfortable and happy to do so again. I mentioned that I am a senior planner, so even though McAdams is, uh, kind of multidisciplinary land use and civil engineering firm. I help out with the entitlement sign, so I was brought in a little more recently to help out with the rezoning. So I am not an engineer by trade. Uh, since there is no site plan in front of you, hopefully there will not be too many detailed engineering type questions, but I will do the best I can if you do have any, any questions of that nature. Uh, some of the statements I wanted to make, uh, just before you tonight. Speak to kind of the plan consistency, uh, speak to our intended use, uh. This is intended, uh, as I stated, uh, for a, a high school site that would accommodate around, uh, two thousand students or so. Again, this is a general use to your civic designation, so technically could encapsulate anything within that designation, but that is what, what prompted this. Uh, we started this process a little over a year, a little over a year ago. Um, and we're, I think their target date is for the August twenty twenty-six in order to be able to try to meet that for a new, a new school site. Uh, the, the high school that they'd be proposing would be a little bit more on the eastern side of the site. It backs up to the noose. Uh, it has good proximity to Highway, uh, seventy. Um, it has some proximity to some existing residential to the west as well, so you have some opportunities potentially, uh, some students that may be able to walk to school rather than drive to school. Um, and, uh, there would be, this is very preliminary in the process, annexing, rezoning. Uh, this would be followed by an actual site plan submitted that would go through all the development review processes that, that any other development of that nature would. There has been a preliminary, uh, T I A, Transformation Impact Analysis that's been formed, reviewed by B O T, uh, for some of those comments. That would be. Going, undergo further review and that actually would be updated as well as the middle school component was added. So additional. Improvements and review would likely come in, um, um, if that middle school component comes through as planned as well. But again, uh, before we can submit a site, a site plan formally, before your staff can review it and know what regulations apply. It has to be given a zoning designation. So that's why we're here for you tonight. Uh, we feel that the civic designation is very appropriate. Uh, it backs up to the, the water plant. It backs up to area that on your future land use map is already actually designated as civic. I know in the planning board, uh, report, it, there was a, there was a comment that, that staff was in, in favor of the approval, but. Uh, a statement of it being inconsistent with the future land use map, I would just say, I don't know that would go as far as say it's inconsistent. It just isn't addressed. It falls just outside of the boundary. So it's just, it's not included within that area to determine consistency or inconsistency. Uh, but it is directly adjacent to areas, uh, in your future land use map that have a civic designation. Uh, so I feel like I would look at that as simply an extension of that existing civic that is within your study boundary if this were approved. I don't know, a nuanced point, but one I wanted to make. Outside of that, uh, you know, I mentioned, uh, backing up the noose, it has plenty of size to be kind of separated and buffered off as other uses, plenty of size for. The schools to make sure that they have room to be able to adequately separate carpool from buses, have adequate queue lengths. Uh, any school brings traffic, but the important thing is to have enough room to internalize that traffic to pull it off of the main road. So it's not, nothing's backing up onto your frontage roads. With over two hundred acres, the, the site definitely, uh, checks that box. Uh, so I know Johnston County is very, um. Happy with the site selection, the opportunities it, it allows and be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Where on the, where on the map would be the athletic fields?
Uh, that, let's, fields, hold on, let me bring up my. My reference would be pushed a little bit further back. You'd have kind of your parking more up front and then push back into kind of different, two different locations of, uh. I think the baseball, I think was a little bit more eastward and then you're kind of multi-
I was thinking a little bit more along the lines of, uh, uh, football, uh, light specifically at nights for soccer and football. How are they gonna go affect the folks in Clearwater?
I think they're, I think they'd be far enough back that they will not, uh, affect that.
So I don't have a distance in front of me, but the, 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 uh, the baseball fields are on the totally opposite side basically from what they're prelim- again, I'm giving you, uh, their preliminary plan. There's not been an official site plan submitted, but the initial, uh, preliminary plan would be, you'd have your, your, your baseball fields on the eastward side, opposite of where Clearwater would be. And then you'd have a, a track and, a football and track and field complex that would be a little bit closer to Clearwater, but it's, it's still on the. Uh, you have that road that kind of cuts through the site that goes back to the cell tower. It's still on the eastern side of that road. There are some wetlands as well on the western side that also are gonna provide some, some separation from that side. So. I don't have the linear distance, but there is some, some separation built in.
Okay, I-
Yeah, there, there's gonna be enough buffer, I think, between, um, the fields and Clearwater that it's not, cause it also backs up to the water plant.
Right.
Yeah, correct.
I, I do notice. It looks like coming off of Towton Farm Road, there is a street going back with a small parcel square back there. What is that?
That's the cell tower.
Oh, okay, all right.
And that is excluded from this request that-
Yeah.
Right, okay.
We can't reason on that.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any more questions?
Make a motion to approve the rezon of forty-two Towton Road, partial I D one seven K. King oh eight oh two eight A Adam from I two to Civic. Second.
Councilman Brown made the motion. Councilman Trippett seconded it. Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will open. Our first open forum. Anybody wishing to address counsel, please come forward, state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
My name's Desha Whittaker. I'm at one eighty-four Clearwater Drive. And I just have questions. I wanna know how long will it take to get a visual map of what's gonna be behind my house?
Where, would you say?
One eighty-four Clearwater Drive.
Behind your house?
Yeah.
I think that's what he, he just walked out. He was the one that would said they, they've gotta come up with the, uh, with, with the plan after we approved it.
Okay, so you don't have like a timeline?
You can ask, if you wanna run out and try and ask him.
He may know.
I don't think, I don't think what'll be closer to you on Clearwater will be more like athletic fields and nothing-
What I'm concerned about is football games, football, you know, all that stuff that comes along with that. And then I've heard there's a proposed greenway. That's coming.
That's on, that's on the Nish River.
Okay, so that's not gonna be anywhere near the back of my lot.
No, the greenway will be along Nish River. Yeah, that's the mountain to the sea greenway that they're, they're will be putting in.
Okay, well Wendy, I'll step out.
Any more?
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'm gonna close the first open forum at seven fifty-seven. And I would just like to say that, um, oh man, I'm sorry, I leaned too close. So sensitive tonight. Yeah, that. Back on me. Um. Uh, Leanna and I attended the town state. Gold's Road last Wednesday. Had a very good time. I know, it's going to come. And it ain't nothing I'm good at, so. But, um. I have attended the mayor's meeting this month. I have attended the sewer meeting. I have a lot of meetings that I attend and, um, there's a lot of things that's going on in our town and in our county. And we just need to, uh, stay on top of what's going on so that we can do what's the best for our community. So just, um, if you have a problem, please bring it to us so that we can address it. Because we want to be sure that we do what's best for our citizens. And that's all I have. And now we're gonna turn it over to Leanna and she's got it much.
I'll be brief. Um, the first item is the Central Pines Regional Council proposal for facilitating and planning the master plan for the town hall campus. And Elena is here with us and so I'm just gonna let you go to the mic that's actually working and.
What do you think, council? Um, and do you all have the proposal in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, I wanna make sure I'm not assuming anything. Um, so my name's Leanna Keegan. I'm the local government services director of Central Pines. It's great to be back every time I'm here. Feels like there's so much going on in your meeting, so it's nice to get to hear it. Um, so our ta- our team spoke with Leanna about this, um, this process and what we put together in the proposal. Is really a high level overview of what that will include. I'm gonna talk through it a little bit and then I'm happy to take any questions. Um, and so based on our conversation, um, we know you recently acquired property for what will be your town campus. Um, and are looking for some assistance, um, facilitating the process of, of determining what that will look like, what the town is really looking for out of that property. Um, and so our role will be sort of two pieces. First will be doing sort of an environmental scan, so that would include- So that would include, um, gathering information from the town, current staffing needs, future staffing needs. Um, pulling examples from peer communities. So you have many communities both nearby and in the state who have done similar processes. Um, pulling resources from those processes and then also gathering all of the zoning and environmental considerations that might come into play for this property. Um, and so we would put all of that together and then use that for the process that we would facilitate with you. So we're proposing three facilitated meetings with council staff that need to be participating. And any other stakeholders that council might deem, um, need to be involved in that process. Um, and obviously these would be public meetings because you'll all be there. Um, and so the three meetings would include, the first one would be us reviewing that environmental scan, talking through what we found, the considerations you need to take into place. Peer communities and what they have done, what they've done well, what they maybe haven't done well. The second meeting would be more of a deep dive into what your priorities are for the property. Um, and then the third meeting would be where we would hope to find consensus on what you would like to see moving forward. The end result of these meetings is our team putting together recommendations and a draft RFQ for an engineering architecture firm. Um, to, to bid on, um, for the property. Um, and we anticipate, um, that we would likely be requesting engineering and architecture firms to provide multiple scenarios. Um, but that would depend on what comes out of the process. And that's really the, an overview of, of what we're looking for. Our timeline, we've proposed a timeline. Um, if we start soon, basically if we start in May, we propose to finish by August and then you can move forward with the bidding process. Summer is always a little hard to get everyone scheduled together, but we would do our best. Happy to answer any questions on that process or Leanna, if I've missed any context, don't.
I don't have any real questions. I just, I just wish to point out to, to council that, um, we knew when we, uh, undertook the, uh, the, the project of the new town hall, uh, campus that they were going, it's not a just walk in, there it is and, and have fun with it. That it had to be, uh, reworked, you know, to our, to suit our needs both now and for the long ways in the future. And I think we picked the, the, the best outfit to come and do this. Not only with Elena and we've worked with Elena before and we've worked with Central Pines also, AKA TJ Cog. We've had great results. So I think this, this price right here is an excellent, uh, uh, buy for us for the service we're going to get from the people that are going to give it to us.
Any questions?
Yeah, um, I, I have one.
Yep.
I'm not sure who to address it to. Stakeholders. Um, I understand town staff, I understand elected, elected officials. I'm not real sure I understand public property owners.
Well, that could include Wade Easton, the one that owns the property next to us that we bought from.
Yeah, but that's, that's under both developers on each side of the campus.
Yeah.
It says public property owners and then, then Wilson Mills and then, then developers on both sides, so.
I think he's looking at my, um, requests for action as opposed to the proposal. You're looking at my memo to you all, is that correct?
Oh, this, Missy Brown.
Okay, and I put that in there because until you meet and decide who you feel like the stakeholders need to be, we don't really know who that may be. Once you decide who needs to be at.
They're simple.
Yeah, but we will not be determining that, you will.
Right.
Alright, I didn't know.
No, that's a, it's a good question. I didn't obviously clarify that enough, so. Yes, whoever you would want to participate would be, who would participate.
Any more question? We need a motion to.
Make a motion to approve the proposal for facilitation and planning for the Wilson Town, Wilson's Mills Town Hall Campus Master Plan.
Motion made by Councilman Trippett, seconded by Councilwoman Dobbin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Look forward to working with you.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you, Elena. Uh, the second item on the agenda is the award, awarding the bid for the branding and logo project. Excuse me. Um, so in your packet, you have staff's recommendation. The request for qualifications on the branding and logo project went out on February twenty-sixth and were due by March fifteenth. We received five submissions, all within the deadline. We were, we reviewed the submissions with scoring for various criteria such as experience, reference, um, proposed scope of work, things such as that. Our top three candidates were Expanding Eden, Haven Creative and Small Town Soul. And I put some, um, specifics in your request for action about their costs and scoring and project timelines. And then during the week of April eighth, interviews were held with the top three candidates. And after those interviews, our recommendation for the award for branding the logo goes to Small Town Soul. And that's basically because of the more personal approach. The Small Town Soul stated that they would do gathering information in person at town events, traveling here and staying close by for an extended period to just get to know the community and business members. Or excuse me, business owners and stakeholders within the town. Um, their total timeline is seven months, which is about two or three months more than some of the other ones. However, they had a much more personal approach. The other ones with the three to four month timeline, everything would have been done online via surveys. And we've seen in the past that just not, it doesn't work well with our community. We don't get a lot of good response from that, so.
Surveys don't.
Um, we had originally hoped to get this done by the end of this fiscal year, but we still recommend Small Town Soul even with the fall of twenty-four completion. Because we feel like the finished product will be much better with this company's work. So their total, um, proposed amount is twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars with a timeline of seven months. And you had originally earmarked fifty thousand for this project, so way under what you had earmarked for that.
Personally, personally, if you're looking for questions, I don't have a question. I, you know, I, I, I read through all three of them, uh, Expanding Eden, Haven, uh, Creative and Small Town Soul. And, uh, Small Town Soul just kind of reaches out and, and, uh, and, and touches you because it's a small business. And it gives you right off the bat, gave me a warm fuzzy, even though she conducts her business a little bit differently by outsourcing, you know, certain, certain things. That's good. I like that because like she said, I don't have to pay their consistent overhead, et cetera. So anyway, it just reached out to me and, and said, that's a good choice right there. It seems like she could be part of us.
And, um, Star is here. She has worked really closely on this project too. And as I put on here, I want to thank her for jumping in whenever I wasn't feeling well one of those weeks, so she just kept the ball rolling.
Does, does anyone have any questions?
Reading through it, I agree with David. It was, uh, you could see that the difference between the companies was their, their, their personnel, their personals impinging to it versus the, the virtual, what I call the virtual stuff. And I'm, I'm more into the, the real stuff than the virtual stuff, but.
And Leanne, just for clarification, uh, for, for whoever's listening, um, can you, can you explain what branding and logo is? I mean, obviously logo, but branding, can you just give a brief little synopsis of, of, of what this entails?
Sure, so since the town was incorporated, everything that we put out there, whether it's Facebook or letterhead, anything like that, has had our town seal. And that's typically not really, I mean, not really supposed to be used for everything we put out there. That's our town official seal. So this would be branding the town. It would, um, come up with tagline, if you will. I'm not really sure that's the right word to use, but, um, to just put our name out there for, you know, we have some people on Facebook who like to comment about our generic town hall. And, um, Wilson's Mills wouldn't fit on the front of the building. But anyway, sign made once this branding project is over. And it's, to give it a comparison, I think Selma's is a charming place to be. Is that right? So that's, that's kind of an example of what this would be. It would bring the community, it's so she'll actually come to the community and talk with community members in person, business owners in person, staff, council. Everyone here to try to decide what our brand should be. Art, a tagline, whatever, what, what have you.
And, and thank you for that. And I've been one that's been very vocal about this. Uh, it's not a logo, it's a seal is all it is.
Right.
For, for quite a while, but.
The official seal.
But you know, a, as we've seen, as we've seen tonight, we, we, we have to, we can't just have a campus like we talked about a while ago and just say, let's do whatever with it. Because if it is, it'll be junked up. It, it won't be planned out. And I think, um, for the citizens of, of this town, we, we have to make an identification. Although in my mind of, of, of being here for, for fifty, fifty-four years, I know what identification, identification is. But folks like me are, are, are slimmer and getting slimmer every year. So I, I, I think I, I agree with us doing a, a branding and logo and, and a, a town identity. And I think we have to do that.
Any more comment?
Make a motion that we, um, award the branding and logo, logo project to Small Town Soul for twenty-nine, fifth, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred.
Motion made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Brown. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Economic Development Advisory Board recommendation. And as Mr. Trippett talked about meeting before last, I believe it was, that he has been serving on the Economic Development Advisory Board for Johnston County. And is willing to come off if somebody else wanted to apply. And Ms. Dobbin has applied with the county. Her application is, so if you would like to recommend, Ms. Dobbin, you pending the Johnston County Commissioners for their appointment, not appointing her to the county.
I will to make the motion that we recommend Ms. Dobbin's to be a, a representative on the Economic Development Advisory Board. Yeah, to the, to the county commissioner.
Motion made by Councilman Trippett, seconded by Councilman Brown. Are there any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And just for clarification on that, this will go to the county commissioners in May. So if you still have a meeting between now and then, Ms. Trippett, you would.
They're going to go to you.
Oh, okay, okay.
They've already talked that out.
Okay, yeah. Okay, um, the next, oh, I'm sorry. The, um, the next three items have to do with calling a public hearing for annexation. And the information is in your packet. And it's on by Reba Walker, parcel ID one seven K zero eight zero four three I. And the first item is, um, adopt approving a resolution directing the clerk to investigate the petition. We need a, we need a motion to approve the resolution. Where is this property? Where is this at? This property. The map is included in there. It's right on.
I couldn't get here.
Highway, highway seventy.
This is seventy highway. This is, this is that big brick house there. It's that property. Right there next to the church.
To the church?
There's a big brick house, long house. That's the property.
This by Greater Vision, correct? On seven to west.
We're having difficulty.
You go seventy.
Is this by Greater Vision Church?
Uh huh.
We have, we have difficulty locating this really. Even, even this guy who's been here fifty-four years.
Yes, beside of Greater Vision Church, yeah.
Yes.
I don't know that person, but if y'all do.
Yes, they do.
Oh, 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 yeah, 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 got, yeah, yeah, got that now. Have, yeah, have.
Going west, it's not going, it's going, right. Going this way.
Heavy equipment, got it.
We just need a motion for the resolution to.
Yeah, we need a motion to accept the resolution directing the clerk to investigate.
Make a motion, we accept, uh, the res, resolution or annexation of, uh, property one seven K zero eight zero four three I. Is that wrong?
No, the first resolution is to direct the clerk to investigate the petition.
Okay.
Yep, it's on the.
Subsection five. On your, on your.
Oh, I'm so tired.
I know.
Really?
We all are.
I'm not, I'm not just kidding. Alright, it's got to say what, directing the clerk to what? Investigate the petition?
Yes.
I make a motion, we have the clerk investigate the petition. For annexation, um, of property, uh, ID number one seven K zero eight zero four three I. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
I ain't doing that again.
Motion made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Dobbin. All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
The certificate of sufficiency is in your packet. And unfortunately, um, it was copied before it was sealed, but everything was sufficient. The petition was signed by all owners. So the next resolution that we would like for you to approve is calling the public hearing on this annexation for Monday, May twentieth at six thirty PM.
I make a motion that we call for a public hearing on question of annexation pursuant to, uh, GS one six zero A hyphen five eight point two. Um, to, 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 for six thirty PM on May twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Dobbin. Uh, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we just called it over here.
Yep. So I have two other items. First one, I gave you a copy of an email before being started. It says to Leanna, but it's actually to me, Leanna. He got my name wrong. Um, this is the gentleman who works for Interstate Outdoor, who's the owner of the billboard on our property. And apparently the previous owner has just started the conversations about moving this billboard. And they don't really want to move it. They want to, to present to us other options to keep it on the property with a ten-year lease paying us four thousand a year. And they also stated that, um, they would put a clause on the lease that it would prohibit any advertisement that promotes adult entertainment, alcohol, anti-Christian or tobacco messages, messages. Also no advertisements political in nature or using profanity or vulgarity, which, uh, I hope that they would do that on any billboard. Um, but they stated that moving the billboard to the east, back on to the Selco property or Wade Easton, Wade Easton's current property would be cost prohibited. And that, um, it's actually the property of Interstate Outdoor and not Wade Easton's, which I told him that our agreement was with Wade Easton and we own the property now. So I told him that I would present this information to you so that you could make a decision and let me know yes or no. But they said if no agreement could be made for the billboard to stay there, they did want to request a ninety-day grace period to find a new location and that they would compensate the town during that grace period for one thousand dollars.
What, uh? I don't go through that part of seventy very often. What's the, uh, nature of the advertising now? And it's electronic and does it revolve around different topics for every thirty minutes or something?
It's, it's not a digital sign. And right now, since we've been there here last year, I know our side is a doctor's office. I'm not sure what the west side. Yeah, Dr. Dorn, I don't know what's on the other side, but it's the first thing I should know because it's the first thing you see when you come around that curve. You don't see town hall, you see the billboard, which is the reason that you all wanted it moved to begin with, so.
Well, how, I, I wish he was here to answer a couple of questions like, how much is he making right now from that particular billboard?
Who, Mr. Ethan?
Yeah, yeah, the owner of the one that wants the extension. I mean.
Yeah, they.
Interstate, okay, yeah, not Mr. Ethan, Interstate Outdoors. I'd like to know how much, as a curiosity, what their revenue is off of that thing. And if it's not a whole lot, I'm, I'm sure it's not. Maybe we could think about granting that extra ninety days. Forget about the thousand dollars, but put a nice Wilson's Mills billboard up there for ninety days.
Um, uh, I, I, I might not have a problem with giving them the extra ninety days, but I'm totally against letting them keep it there. I think they need to find somewhere to put it, not on our property. I'm totally opposed to saying on our property, but I am not against giving them ninety days to find, since, since Mr. Ethan hasn't, did not let them know in advance. And they own the, you said this group owns the, well, sign, right? So I would not be against giving them ninety days, otherwise still if I gave them ninety days, require them to pay us. I mean, if you're gonna give them ninety days, make them pay for it. But, uh.
Is our agreement with Wade on the sign?
That the billboard would be removed by May of twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so that's a, we're, we're, we're binding with that. That's a legally binding contract.
He was not the one to, to, to do any contract because it's not his.
He agreed to.
Am I correct, uh, counselor?
The agreement that you had with Wade was when he was the owner of the property to enter into, to terminate whichever lease he had for the, for the billboard so that it would be removed by this date. And, but you can say that he's in breach of the contract and, but that doesn't gain you much if he doesn't own the billboard. And you're the current property owner. And so any discussions about the billboard really needs to take place between the town and Interstate.
And you're right, but my problem is, 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 is we, we had an agreement. And because we kept our part and somebody else didn't, now we're going to entertain giving them ninety days to move it to his property?
I don't think it's gonna be moved to his property. I think it's just gonna be moved elsewhere.
They've got to find a different location.
Yeah, I mean, it, that would, if they did, if they did move it, would it be within, would it be enough distance between the two?
It would, it would have to be. In fact, when they had originally started talking about moving it from where it is to the other end of where his property is, where his development may be at some point, his other property, that was gonna be not quite within the ordinance, but we were gonna give him, give him a little leeway just because it was still his property. It was still his piece of property. Um, but apparently there's some, some, um.
Construction.
Site work needed there.
I'll just say this, I, it, it's not Interstate's fault. I mean, that, that they won't notify. I mean, I don't know that we, it was our place to notify them. Maybe it was, I.
No, it was not our place to notify.
But, but it's certainly not their fault, I don't think.
So. You're out of order. Thank you.
I, I personally don't have a problem with, um, their offer. I, I think if, if they, uh, they charge typically four thousand dollars a year, where they, for that.
That's, that's what they pay.
That's what they pay. Yeah, for the lease and give us, uh, we give them ninety days for a thousand. That ninety days will blow by in a heartbeat. I say, I say give them the benefit of the doubt that they offer a thousand, take the thousand. And make sure that the end of ninety days, there won't be an extension.
Well, I, I disagree. Um, and, and I understand what you're saying, but, but I, 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 I also say this. If, I'm not against giving them the ninety days, but, but why not say five thousand? I mean, what, what, it, it's on our property.
We hold the upper hand. We do hold the upper hand and we have all the cards. I understand that, but we're, we're, we're Wilson's Mills. We don't wanna, we don't wanna stick it to somebody like that just because we can.
Well, I could've said ten. I mean, that, those signs are not cheap. I don't know if any of you have ever looked into, to, I mean, they are not cheap.
I understand, but it's not, I, I don't see that as their fault. They're looking at it. They don't pay attention to these things as far as whose, whose property it is. And when the property is sold, Wade never told them the property was sold. So they're kind of left holding the bag and they're saying, listen, we just found out about it. We'll even give you a thousand dollars for another ninety days and just hold them to it.
There we go. We need it. So the ninety days will be, um, after May, right?
It would be.
But a ninety-day grace period, so I'm assuming May, June, July, hopefully by the end of July. We would need to, we would need to, to have some sort of.
Yes, no. Did you not say that, that, uh?
I'm sorry.
Wage agreement was that it would be off at the end of May?
End of May.
By, by May fifteenth.
May fifteenth, then, like, if we're gonna give them the ninety days, it should be from May fifteenth.
Yes.
Yeah, we're not, it's not affecting us property-wise. We're still able to do what we need to do with town. It's just a visual thing, an appearance. And give them ninety days, take the thousands, they think you'll be out by ninety days.
Well, and, 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 and I'm not disagreeing with that, but what I'm saying is you, you, you have, have, have done a phenomenal job in coordinating with hungry children in this neighborhood. So why can't we say, okay, rather than your average monthly, monthly, that what you've been playing, we're gonna do this, but double it, two thousand dollars and put that money towards feeding children out of this school. I don't think we ought to just take, oh, we'll give you a thousand dollars. And, I mean, we have things that, that we can use that for, and I can't think of a thing better than feeding the children of this school who are hungry in this community. And rather than saying, we'll take whatever you throw at us. Well, no, it's the town property.
Well, I think it's a generous, I think the thousand is generous. If you wanted to, to negotiate with somebody who suddenly left holding with the bag, we can do that, I guess, but I, I wouldn't go another thousand.
A suggestion. I just done the math on four thousand dollars a year and it's three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cent a month.
That's why they come up with a thousand, right?
So they ain't paying us a dime.
A thousand dollars is a third, in, in three months is a third of the year. That's how they came up with it. They were gonna pay us four thousand for the whole year. Three months would be a thousand dollars. That's how they came up with.
Right.
But I, and I'm not against what you say, say, Tim. I might even go with you and say, let's, let's tell them that we'll extend it for, for ninety days, but it's gonna be two thousand. And that we'll, and we'll use the money for what you, you, uh, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I mean, the money is, 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 it's not a factor, but it could be used for something real good.
The, the, a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars in the, in the budget is, is, is not gonna make, make, make a, 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 a difference. But if you say, and, and I'm just, I'm just, and I'll say, I said two thousand dollars, so that doubles what they offered. Um, you could certainly say more than that in our position, but if you say two thousand dollars, I mean, how, how far would that two thousand dollars go?
Well, I personally, we did last, last, we have two thousand dollars in the budget for the kids. We used up this last time, but I was trying to be very conservative because I had hopefully three food programs to feed in this school. We did six hundred. Nine hundred and seven dollars. Yeah, nine hundred and seven. And I felt very good about that. And so did Patrick, my, my sidekick over there. So you know what? If you do two thousand, is there a way we could do something like this and say, we'll do it for two thousand? And you give it to us, uh, I know this is strange, but say in the form of a prepaid debit card. Doesn't go into, no, seriously, it doesn't come in the form of a check. It's gotta go through, uh, Sherry and the whole nine yards. You give us a prepaid debit card, Patrick and I use that thing three times a year and go buy food. What's wrong with that?
I'm, I'm gonna.
You don't like that.
I'm gonna defer to Gabe on that because I don't know how.
That's strange, isn't it?
Ask, I suppose. I, I can't sit here even contemplate how, what sort of issues that might give rise to in terms of legalities, um.
I'm not sure how we would audit that.
Yeah, right, right. That's, that's, there's, there's a lot. I, I think that maybe adds on, uh.
All right, well, if we just, if we just said, you know, two thousand, and we are, we are using this strictly for food for the children, it'll, it'll be a, a, not quite as bitter pill for these folks to swallow.
I, I do want to say one thing.
For a lot of food.
It, it, I do want to say one thing. They, they may, they may say, very well, in that case, we'll, we'll remove our billboard on May fifteen.
That's fine.
Just, just saying. I think, I think the, the request is simply that they, they have, so that they have time to find a location so they can remove it and then go put it up in a place, you know, where, where they, where it's suitable. So I, I just want to be sure that we're on the same page as to what the, the negotiating positions are.
Yeah, we're helping them and they're helping us, or they're helping the children.
Okay, so we need, we need a motion.
Well, and that's what I was gonna ask. If I, if they make a motion tonight, can they form where it's, uh, given me the authority to approve something?
I think that's a good idea.
So, so what you're saying is for us to make a motion for you to make them an offer of two thousand dollars for a three-month extension.
Less than a ninety.
Yeah.
You mean no more than a ninety-day grace period?
Right.
Yeah, I'm game.
Okay, like that. However, Gabe says.
Tell us how to word it.
That, that, that's, that's really up to the council. I mean, I could come up with the wording, but, um, i- if you're thinking about a ratio, you can do it that way. You know, sort of a bracketed ratio. I don't know what it, what a two thousand over ninety days is, but a certain number of dollars per day. Per day?
No, no, no.
Per month, okay. Well, and maybe you have, uh, that, that ratio must be maintained, or you might put it, put it in a range. I don't, I don't know. That's, that's up to the council, but.
Twenty-two dollars a day.
One, hundred and twenty-two.
Twenty-two, twenty-two dollars a day.
Let's try this then, if it's twenty-two. I make a motion that we, we present Interstate Outdoor Incorporated with a proposal whereby they can, they may keep the outdoor advertising sign on our property for no more than ninety days. And they pay us, they, uh, they pay us twenty-two dollars per day uh, for as long as they keep that sign within the ninety days. Do you say, is that, is that fair?
It's, it's up to you, but that's a, that, that's a suitable motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. Does everybody understand it?
Runs up to that ninety days. It runs up to that ninety days, it'll come back to us before the, the ninety days expire, so we can increase that, that daily rate, correct?
Twenty-two a day is two thousand for the ninety days.
But if, but if they all of a sudden come up and day eighty gets there.
Uh huh.
And we got a council meeting that night, we're gonna be, we're gonna have to readdress that if they don't get it moved in ten days.
I, I would suggest that you have the town administrator look to see if there's, they have a short-term lease that they can enter into and that at the end of the ninety days, they remove the billboard. Otherwise, that you have rights to, I assume, ownership or, or remove it yourself or something like that, whatever their, their standard lease says.
Do you want that, do you want that amended?
Yes.
All right, I amend my motion to include that should Interstate, Interstate Outdoor Incorporated not remove their sign by ninety days, we have the, uh, Leanna will have the authority to, um, to negotiate with them for possession.
Um, so.
Of the property?
Uh, quibble.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't think you can unilaterally give Leanna that, that authority. I, I think it, that has to be part of the agreement with Interstate at the outset. That you're doing a short-term temporary lease, ninety-day lease. Um, and that at the end of that ninety days, there is no further right to use the property, to have the billboard there as, as it would in any other lease. And at that point, the town then has rights, if they haven't removed it, the town has rights to, to take, you take ownership or.
Does that have to be in the motion?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. So let's, let's make a motion, uh, that we.
It's just to authorize me to sign a short-term lease on those terms.
Yeah, we, we authorize the town.
Standard terms.
The town administrator to negotiate with Interstate Outdoor for standard, standard terms.
It's just that you enter into a written agreement for the, the, that short-term use of the billboard.
Okay, short-term use of the billboard, you know what to say.
So the, the idea, the idea here is only that, and not just be an email that says that we'll do it for, you know, twenty-two dollars a day for ninety days. If you have a written agreement with them that specifies what happens at the end of those ninety days, that, that would be.
So we make a motion that we enter into a written agreement with Interstate Outdoor whereby, uh, they pay, they will pay us twenty-two dollars a day up to, um, the date they remove the sign within the ninety days. Am I making it difficult? I'm just trying to throw the ninety days in there too.
I think, sorry, the, the motion simply needs to be that you're authorizing Leanna to negotiate with Interstate.
Okay.
And that the terms are twenty-two dollars a day, maximum of ninety days, and that there'd be a written agreement to memorialize the lease.
Just say, say no.
Okay, uh, make a motion, can I say as stated?
Yes.
You got it.
Please.
Thank you.
Please.
I second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Triplet. And I'm not gonna try to repeat it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
One more item. Yes, yes. Um, I've had some conversations with, um, the mayor and I both have had conversations with different senators, representatives about the mail delivery within the town limits of Wilson's Mills. This has come up before in the past, but I don't know how, how familiar you are with the, this review process by the U S Postal Service. Once you start that official review process, if they do not approve it, you can for ten years. Um, so over a year, increase. As we've grown, the problems have just become more substantial with people not knowing where to vote, not knowing who to contact, even if they call nine one one, we've had officers go out to houses and they stood them down saying they didn't know why they were there because they live in Smithfield. Um, there have also been issues with have a Smithfield address. You know the issues. Don't even know they live in town, even though they pay taxes to the town of Wilson's Mills. So Senator Bud and Senator Tillis' offices both have agreed to assist us with this. And I've written a letter dating all of the issues. I have a support letter from the Triangle, the Triangle East Chamber of Commerce about the problems that it would cause and has been causing for businesses in town. And they've offered to, um, support us with that. So once we send it to the U S Postal Service, then they'll follow up with the district manager for the USPS and, and fight on our behalf to try to get route delivery. A couple of the things that we have to think about though is if they do that, they need a location other than where they are right now. Because the building that they're in right now is too small for route delivery, can't be expanded. And so one of the things that we talked about whenever we built the, or bought the new campus was that once the police department was out of the old building and at our new campus, that that might be an available area for us to offer to the U S Postal Service. And then we have also had conversations with the developer at Midtown Village about a building, something that we could look at over there rather than the town hall, which was originally talked about. Doing a building over there that could be leased by the U S Postal Service. So there's some options. This is not anything for you to decide. I'm just kind of letting you know that we're putting that out there for them to start this review process and see if it's anything that they can do at this point.
Yeah, this ten-year thing doesn't, doesn't scare me. I mean, with enough senate, senate help, they'll pay attention within ten years.
And I know that there are a lot of people that we're, we're gonna, if this goes through, get complaints about address changes, but I think, I think the. But I think, I think enough people who live here in town and don't have a Wilson's Mills address are frustrated with enough with it that it's not gonna be such an issue. But in addition to that, right now, we have twenty-eight hundred people that could possibly complain. And in three to five years, we're gonna have about ten thousand people that would complain. So I think we'd rather deal with that right now than we would three to five years from now, or e- for that matter. That's all.
Thank you very much. Any comments from council? We did that. Oh, it's a separate one? Oh, okay. Wendy, I'm sorry, I thought that was the same one. Okay, that was annexation, this is a rezon.
I promise this will be short.
You got me confused.
Um, applicant has requested the rezon of parcel ID one seven K oh eight oh four three I from Ag to C seventy. A hearing must be called and held prior to a vote taken place. Please call for a hearing of the rezon of parcel ID one seven K oh eight oh four three I from Ag to C seventy at the Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, town council meeting at six thirty P.M. or as close as possible thereafter.
Do y'all understand what we're looking at? It's the same parcel that we were looking at.
The same parcel that's up for rezon next month.
All right, so let's move it along. So I, I call for a hearing, a public hearing, a rezon of parcel ID one seven K zero eight zero four three I from Ag to C seventy for Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, at our town council meeting, six thirty P.M. or as close as possible thereafter.
Do I have a second? Um, Councilman McGowan made the motion, Councilman Dobbin seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, so we've got a annexation and a rezoning of the parcel at our May meeting. Now, does the council have any comments?
I do have one thing that I run across this past week, and I, I think we, we uh, that, that our, our staff are gonna have to address and maybe us at some point, is we're gonna have to start looking at renaming some streets, redoing some street names. Uh, Wilson's Mills Road Extension is no longer one road. It loops all the way back around town, and I don't know what the road that my fence yard's on or Cabalco. I have no idea what that street name is now. Um, Company Ranch, but, but we gotta look at, it used to just be one road going in. Now it loops all the way back around and it veers, so it's two roads now. And I don't know how many more roads we got. I know we got service roads and, 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 and stuff that, I don't, I, I don't know. But I just saw that and, and, and made me think.
Wendy, Wendy is already looking at names for those roads because that has to go through the county, nine one one. And so they're, they're already looking at renaming those roads.
All right, well, I just wanna make sure we were, we were moving, moving forward with it and, and uh, and, and, and getting whatever.
She already talked with me about some of that, but yeah, it has to go through nine one one addressing. So she'll have to get the names and then we'll have to have them approve it because.
Yeah, because right now, if you pl- plug in on Google, my, my fence line, it'll take you to McDonald's to get a hamburger. So, so we got to do something, especially with, with, with school coming in and, and this, these developments and stuff. We gotta make sure we, we stay on top of that, so, so people know where they're going.
Yeah. Well, she, I know she is working on that, so. Any more comments? Okay, I will open the second open forum. Anybody wishing to make a comment, please come forward, state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone else? I closed the open forum at eight forty-six.
Motion we adjourn.
Okay, motion made by Councilman McGowan, seconded by Councilman Dobbin. All in favor? Aye.
Mayor, you're coming Thursday, right?
What am I telling you, Thursday?
You're coming like you usually do on Thursday?
Yes.
Because if a couple things are gonna change, what if it's not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that, the uh, the entrance.
Is that one nine or is that one nine?
That one doors, this one time.
This one time?
Yes.
Hey, don't leave me, I'm going to the bathroom. This creep.
That one, yeah. You want me to go with you? Okay.
Yeah, you do, that's why I. That's what I was thinking.
How you doing, Ron?
I'm doing okay, how are you?
No, I'm sorry. We didn't have.
You have too much feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not.
Yeah.
I got a call too.
I got one.
At least have to keep that call.
Yeah. It was out. He said, what? I told him. He said, I got it. It's been a while. I mean, it's long. It was starting off. It's been, it's been, it's been, it's been a while. It's not a lot of vehicles, but it wasn't that big. Two weeks after he approved, and we had already started this. And I'll say, you know what? I want commercial, commercial, which is a lot more. And I want the first R K. Those next five, we're doing it. He said, it's normal, it's the end of twelve weeks. That's what he said. So he said, thank you. They said, no, then I'll, I'll take care of it.
He did, your son did it then? Not you? Okay.
Because I would not.
Yeah, I know, it wouldn't have been, so.
Well, I just, you know, he said, we don't say, well, it's up. I mean, that's how, I, I have been that manner a lot.
Hey, to my, in my opinion, it was totally rude. And I don't.